Are we good? We ready? Alright, welcome to our city council work session. It's Tuesday the 4th of February, two days before Art's birthday. Looking forward to that.
Then it's three before yours.
Glad to have you all here. Roll call. Everybody's here but Brian?
I saw him in the building a half hour ago.
I thought I did too. So, we'll excuse him till he comes. I would like to ask if someone would like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance? I'll do that, Mayor. Oh, go ahead. Okay, yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to ask if someone would like to give us an inspirational thought or offer an opening prayer? Anyone?
I think you got volunteered.
Would you like to? Thank you.
The Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, we are grateful to gather today here in Santaquin. We're grateful for the opportunity to work and to enjoy the freedoms of the place we live in, for the beauty and greatness all around us. We're grateful for the moisture we've received to this day and pray that that would bless us with the moisture we need to build happy, fruitful, and plentiful summer and harvest season. We're grateful for the efforts that are put in by public servants. We pray that that would bless us this night, that we're able to discuss the things we need to efficiency and with the right intents in mind and pray for all these things and do so in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen. You know, nothing more fitting than to have the Central Utah Water Conservancy District say a prayer for water. I think that was perfect, thank you.
It's part of our training.
You know, it's part of ours too. You know, that's part of living in Santaquin. Anyway, thank you. We're gonna jump right into it. So Bruce, would you like to stand up? Are you running the...
I'm just gonna introduce Roger Pearson. Like I told you guys, we gave this presentation to Norm and you, Mr. Mayor, and he asked us to come and give it to you. Roger has been giving this presentation long since the district's 12 years now. And he loves history, so he's the right guy for the job with that. I'm gonna turn it over to Roger. Let me introduce the guy that just walked in as well. Bart Leefling, he is one of our assistant general managers. He's our boss, so we'll do our best to look good for him.
No, thank you, and this is really good. We're glad to have you tonight.
While Norm's pulling that up, I just wanna tell you all how much we appreciate Norm and John and the collaboration that we have together. We, as you guys know, we're in the middle of tearing apart part of your town as we bring the ULS pipeline all the way down to the south end of your town. As we'll talk a little bit, that ULS pipe has been a couple decades in the making and it's pretty amazing to see it finally coming all the way down to Santaquin. And we appreciate the good efforts that your staff are putting into helping us make this a successful project. We hope we're doing our part to make sure that, you know, we're leaving your town better than we found it as we go through. So, we just really appreciate them and appreciate the opportunity to be here to share with you a little bit more about what's next with Central Utah and what you guys can look forward to with the work and the planning efforts that we're doing to try to help address the growing needs and the population growth that you guys are seeing and will continue to see. This... Looks like we're good, okay. I don't know why it's wanting me to do subtitles. We gotta turn that off. I won't be able to focus.
Well, at least it's voice activated.
Alright, there we go. Alright, so this project that we're going to be talking about today, giving you an update, really starts and has its roots in the Strawberry Valley Project. As you all know, the early settlers in this area who were short on water coming out of the canyons, running sheep up in the Strawberry Valley, realized that there was some water up there that they could tap into and along with the federal government and other entities were able to dream up a project, a federal project, a trans basin diversion that would bring water from the Strawberry Valley down into this valley. And it, you know, it took a lot of foresight and effort and a lot of dollars back in those days. It was about, it was about $3 million project back in the early 1900s, which unfortunately today, $3 million doesn't get you much. But, these early settlers leveraged the farms and worked with the federal government to make this project a reality. And this is a picture of the four-mile tunnel that they dug through the mountain up at Strawberry Reservoir. This is called the Strawberry Tunnel. Early on in their efforts to dig this tunnel, they were making a progress of about seven feet a week. That's how far they were making as they tried to dig this tunnel and they realized pretty quickly that they weren't going to make this project work. They weren't going to be able to afford it and get it done. So they quit work on the tunnel and built some power generation facilities down at the mouth of Spanish Fork Canyon so they could get some power up the canyon and have some power tools. And that really is what made that tunnel possible. Those power generation facilities are still in use today by Strawberry Water Users Association. As part of that project, they constructed the High Line Canal to bring water, you know, as far south as Santaquin and out to the Genoa area. This is just a picture of the original Strawberry Reservoir. It was quite a bit smaller then than it is today, and we'll explain that a little bit to you. But, the original Strawberry Reservoir was there and they captured, on average, about 60,000 acre-feet a year that they could bring down into this valley. And that fluctuated, obviously, based on water availability. And this is the South Utah Valley. All of these different irrigation companies are the companies that were impacted by the water brought through the canyon. And the one that we'll be focusing on today with our project is the High Line Division, which is the red. That red High Line Division didn't have access to any of the regular season water. They only had some high water out of the Spanish Fork River that typically ran out in May or June. And so all of the water, essentially for the growing season in the High Line Division, which is in your neighborhood, came from Strawberry Reservoir in this Strawberry Valley Project. Several, well, a few decades later, the Central Utah Project was born. And part of the Central Utah Project was the Bonneville Unit and the Strawberry Aqueduct and Collection System. This expanded the water that could get to the Strawberry Reservoir. So you can see in the upper right is Upper Stillwater Reservoir above Duchesne. That's where we begin our collection of water that would go to the Colorado River if we didn't intercept it. And so all along those hills and drainages coming down to Strawberry Reservoir, you can see the purple pipe going from right to left to the Strawberry Reservoir. We collect and intercept water out of those drainages that would have otherwise gone to the Colorado River to help Utah develop its allocation of the Colorado River supply. We enlarged Strawberry Reservoir 50 years ago and built Soldier Creek Dam. And as a part of our project, the enlarged Strawberry Reservoir was to take MNI water to the south end of the valley. And it morphed into taking some of that water north to Salt Lake.
Roger, can I just recommend that you tell them what MNI water is for those that may not understand the terminology?
Sure, that's great, thank you. So, in our federal water supply, we have two designations, municipal and industrial. So, indoor use or non-agricultural use. It could be industrial, institutional, but non-agricultural use and then we have agricultural use as well. So, most of this water that was developed in the Strawberry Reservoir was for municipal and industrial use. And one key component, and I don't know if I can, maybe I can zoom in. There we go. So, from Strawberry Reservoir, from Strawberry Reservoir, one of the environmental commitments that we had to do with this Central Utah Project was to take that water that was developed by the early pioneers and pull it back out of the canyons. So you can see the short tunnel there coming out of Strawberry Reservoir there at Six Water Creek. They were dumping all that water into Six Water Creek and all that water was creating some big erosion and destroying the canyon as it rushed through. And so as a part of our project, we, in order to help the environment and to mitigate for environmental impacts that we had, we were required to put all of the Strawberry Valley Project water into our pipe. And so now we bring all of that water that was developed in the early 1900s through our pipe down Diamond Fork Canyon and we dump it into the Spanish Fork River there where the Diamond Fork Canyon meets the Spanish Fork River. And then it's delivered through the Strawberry Water Users' facilities and down the High Line Canal out to your area. So at the mouth of the canyon, as our 96-inch pipe comes out of the mouth of the canyon, there are three branches to that 96-inch pipe. There's a 60-inch pipe, oops, well, maybe this is better. There's a 60-inch pipe for Mapleton and Springville that delivers this SVP water to Mapleton and Springville. There's a 60-inch pipe that goes north all the way to Provo Canyon. And in the Provo Canyon, it can dump into the Provo River and it can generate power. We can treat it at a treatment plant. Ultimately, that water can go north by gravity all the way to Salt Lake Airport. And that water originates in the Upper Stillwater Drainage and the drainage is all along. And then the other branch of that is the 60-inch pipe that comes all the way here to Santaquin, which is what we're constructing now. This is just an image or a graphic showing the Spanish Fork Canyon on the left, the 60-inch pipe going to the mouth of Provo Canyon, and the Springville-Mapleton pipe. And then here's a map of our ULS pipe going, the canyon is on the right, coming all the way down here to Santaquin. We just finished up our Salem Reach. All of these reaches are constructed now except for our Santaquin Reach, which we heard from the contractor this week that they're hoping this year they'll be done with all of that pipe, have it in the ground, maybe even in time to pressure test it before the end of the irrigation season. So they're optimistic that they're gonna have all of that in the ground. Here is an overlay of the High Line Canal in green and our ULS pipe in blue. I like to show this slide just so that you have a reference for how closely related these two projects are geographically. Our ULS pipe is bringing 20,000 acre-feet of water and the High Line Canal is bringing about 35,000 to 40,000 acre-feet of water. This is also another graphic which is pretty busy, but the story here is, this depicts the amount of water that comes out of Strawberry Reservoir. The thickness of the line is relative to the amount of water that's being delivered. But these are our contract deliveries that we have out of Strawberry Reservoir, 162,000 acre-feet a year. You can see that 23,000 down on the bottom goes in this 60-inch ULS pipe that we're constructing and then the 61,000 acre-feet of SVP water, which is just above the bottom line there. That's the water that was developed under this Strawberry Valley Project. So how do these two projects relate and interact and tie into what you will see today as our Nevo Regional Water Project? These two water supplies provide the water for our Nevo Regional Water Project. So there are two pieces to the Nevo, two significant pieces to the Nevo Regional Water Project. One is the enclosure of the Strawberry High Line Canal. For High Line Canal and the Bureau of Reclamation, who owns that facility, the purpose for piping the canal is a public safety purpose. It's liability purposes. They improved water conservation and efficient water management. So for High Line Canal, this is a critical project because that canal is over 100 years old. It's having some issues in the past, as maybe you guys remember. If that canal failed, it failed in a farmer's field and they were able to repair it and take care of the farmer. But, the last time it failed is not a farmer's field anymore. It's a bunch of houses and that can be a significant impact to an irrigation company trying to recover from flooding a bunch of houses. So for them, this is a really important project. The other key component is water quality for them. Because of the wildfires, they've had some significant decreases in their water quality. They like to call it watery mud, is what they get more often than some dirt in their water. They've had years where they've had to shut that canal down seven times in an irrigation season, which is a huge impact to that company. For the district, the reason we're involved and the reason that they've asked us to help participate in this canal enclosure is that we will capture the saved water. So as we pipe the canal, they lose about a sixth of their water through seepage and evaporation. When we put the canal in a pipe, we don't lose all that water. And so the district would have the opportunity to obtain that water as a result of paying for the piping of the canal. We'd be buying that water supply. The other component that is important is they have a right from 1921 to access the return flows from their irrigation. So as water goes out for irrigation, only about 67 or 2/3 of that water is consumed. The rest of it returns to the system and because it's import water, not natural to this drainage, they have a right to reuse that water. And they haven't yet taken the opportunity to reuse that. For the district, that water becomes important for Utah Lake and keeping the Utah Lake at a level that allows us to store water in Strawberry Reservoir and up in Jordanale Reservoir. We also have the opportunity, where the Utah Lake doesn't need that water, to potentially go out and market that water and make it available for municipalities and to respond to growth. So that can help boost the water supply that we're developing as a result of this project. The other purpose for this project is to respond to growth. As you all know, growth is picking up in your area and in the areas all around you. Some of the highest population growth percentages in the state are happening here in this end of the valley and in Juab County if they have a water supply. And so, part of our commitment with developing this water supply is taking some water to Juab County. They originally were going to get some of our Central Utah Project water and that didn't work out until our board has committed and passed a resolution to get Juab County some water so that they can respond to growth themselves. Alright, so here's the Nevo Regional Water Project.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, absolutely.
So, for the Juab County, is that going through Santaquin's pipeline? Or is there a different pipeline?
It would be drinking water. So Santaquin's pipeline is raw water and we'll bring drinking water. And we'll explain, that's a little bit of a tough question to ask and I'll explain it in just a sec. Because we're going to potentially convert the new pipe that we just built to a drinking water pipe as a result of this project. So, we've got a lot to figure out in the next couple of years. And this is our concept today. But to orient you, left is the canyon and then you're looking down south towards Santaquin and to Juab County. So there are a few major components to this project. Here's the existing facilities. You can see the purple line are district facilities, our Central Utah Project facilities. You can see the purple line coming all the way south to Santaquin and then the yellow is the High Line Canal. And maybe a little bit hard to see, and the orange there is the Power Canal. This is where Strawberry Water Users' Association diverts out of the Spanish Fork River and makes deliveries to the High Line Canal. And so this is, well, let me cycle through these. This is the project as it's envisioned today. So if we go to the canyon, maybe it's better if I just cycle through or zoom in on these features for you. Oops, I don't know where I'm at now. Okay. So here at the mouth of the canyon, our proposal, since High Line Canal's main water supply is water from Strawberry Reservoir, our concept that we have proposed right now is to make a new connection. As we explained, there are currently three 60-inch pipes coming off our 96-inch canyon pipe. We are going to add another 60-inch pipe, shown in red. That will bring water from Strawberry Reservoir into the new High Line Canal enclosure. And so one of the important benefits of this project is to get, keep the Strawberry Reservoir water that High Line Canal has out of the watery mud that is generated in the Spanish Fork River so that this water supply is clean. The other benefit is that this water supply will be pressurized. If you know where Monks Hollow is, up Diamond Fork Canyon, it is pressurized from there. And so down here at the bottom of the canyon, we're at about 300 PSI. And so, as we connect onto the new 96-inch pipe, we'll take a 60-inch pipe through the High Line Canal to this blue square, which is a proposed or new water treatment plant. So this will be a surface water treatment plant. It will be a large water treatment plant that will be utilized as a regional water treatment plant to meet the needs of the communities Salem and south. We may even be able to have the opportunity to tie into Spanish Fork as a result of this project with, there will be some pumping and some other things. But, the water treatment plant, the water treatment plant in Salem is important, is an important feature to your future water supply. As you know, the communities in this area rely heavily on groundwater. You all rely heavily on springs and groundwater. And as growth continues, the need to kind of diversify that portfolio and provide some resiliency and redundancy is going to be needed. And this water treatment plant will, as we said, serve to provide a resiliency and a redundancy component to your future water supplies as you need it. From the water treatment plant, the red line will continue down the High Line Canal, which is the High Line Canal enclosure pipe as a 72-inch pipe. And it will stay 72-inch from Salem all the way here to Santaquin. The finished water pipe is going to be the converted ULS pipe. So we originally had three pipes shown. We had the ULS pipe, which is the pipe we're building now, the High Line Canal enclosure pipe, and then a finished water pipe. And through some value engineering and some value planning, we discovered that we were able to save about $120 million by making the High Line pipe a little bigger and converting our current raw water pipe that we're building for you now into a drinking water pipe. And so that's the direction we're headed. So from the treatment plant, that finished water pipe will travel along the current ULS alignment. And those two pipes will come down to here to Santaquin where the High Line Canal and the ULS cross, which is right just north of town, next to your public... Yeah, your water reclamation facility. So those two cross, at that cross, the finished water pipe will be a new facility. The ULS pipe coming in town will stay raw water, so that's why it's a little bit tricky to answer your question. The raw water will come through the High Line Canal and then go through the pipe that we're building now. And the High Line Canal will continue on to finish serving out through Genoa. Not shown on here yet, if I can cycle through this. Nope, I went backwards.
There you go.
So not shown on here, I don't know if I can zoom in on it, there we go, are the additional finished water facilities. So as you can see, where all of those lines converge, the red, the purple, and the blue, there's a new blue line that continues on down to the gap where we'll have some finished water tanks and a pump station. That pump station will pump water up over the hill into Mona and then ultimately all the way down to Nephi. And then the finished water will continue flowing out to the Goshen area. That was a lot. I apologize for giving you so much in such a little amount of time. What questions, what questions do you have about our proposed project? Maybe, as Bruce said, I've given this presentation way too many times. Sometimes I'm too close to realize, sometimes I'm not talking in terms that people who aren't familiar with the project understand. Any questions about what...
I have a question. So that proposed one, that'll go through a neighborhood. I think most of this won't affect any real developed areas other than that part, right?
The...
That light blue line, is that...
Yeah, coming down to, sorry, going through to Mona.
Is that along the railroad or like...
Currently it's shown in Summer Ridge Parkway.
Yeah.
But then coming to the...
And then we'll go down the old highway, the old highway to Mona.
Okay, okay.
Yes, so even, yeah, that's Summer Ridge Parkway.
But I mean, that part east of Summer Ridge, isn't that like the railroad?
Yeah, there's a railroad on that side.
I guess the south tip of that reservoir is more than a road.
Okay.
But even there, it's Summer Ridge Parkway.
Yeah.
Where it jogs to the east there, that's gonna be a neighborhood in the next year.
Yeah.
So I would point out that these are approximate routes, they're not real routes yet.
Not a good plan right now.
Yep, so that's a really good point. This is concept-level design.
Yeah.
And we, all of these, all of these facilities, except for these extra pipes coming off, are going to be federal facilities. And so we have to go through the NEPA process. We're getting ready to kick off our environmental impact statement. All of the water associated with this project is federal water. And so that triggers some federal action. And so, we... And so that, that triggers, triggers some federal action. And so we, these are very concept level. Um, we had to put some lines on a paper to get some cost estimates.
That's fine. I see those houses getting built and I don't think they want to get dug up.
Yes, and, and if we.
Right down the street, that'll be alright.
Yeah, we'll, we'll tear up some roads again for you. Yes, that's a good point is, is as we continue to go through this planning process. We, we know we're going to have to adjust and, and so yeah, appreciate that insight.
So with the additional lines, um, being built that were not planned before, we've been paying for this water for a long time. Um, additional lines, does that mean additional cost to cities?
It, it does not. So you can, you can choose, you, you have a contract to take your water, raw water. Today, nothing will change on that contract. Um, if, the only, the only cost you might see is if you, the only cost you will see is if you take it to the drinking water treatment plant. So you'll be able to have the opportunity, the water you've already contracted for. If, if you don't need it for outside irrigation and you need it for indoor use. You'll be able to take it to the drinking water treatment plant. You'll pay a, a treatment. Rate of, you know, a rate to treat that water and, and deliver it. Um, through the, through the regional infrastructure, but your, your current raw water deliveries. Um, won't be interrupted and, and won't have. They'll, they'll be delivered under the, under your current contracts. They'll be delivered maybe a little bit different, but they'll still be delivered. Um, under pressure and, and from Strawberry Reservoir, just like your current contracts.
Do you, do you have a new timeframe that you're working with, with this changeover to uh Highline? Addition of Highline?
Yes, um, I can, that's one of my next slides if we're ready to move on. So one, one other big, big feature, um. With this, with this project is Mag and UDOT. Are already uh soliciting funding. They've, they've already received an award, um, about seventeen million dollars for funding. Of a trail, uh, regional, regional trail along this uh alignment, which is the Highline Canal. And so. That's one of the, one of the components of this project that, that, you know. UDOT and Mag are, are working on, on making sure that they. If they have the opportunity are in line to, to make it happen.
So this could be very much like the Murdoch Trail in, in North Utah County where they piped the Murdoch Canal was. Fifteen, seventeen miles, something like that. And there's an, an urban trail right over the top of that pipeline now. So this could be very similar to that.
Yep, it would be about eighteen miles. Um, and it would, it would go from Genoa all the way up to the mouth of the canyon. There in Spanish Fork. So, so timeline and, and you let me know, uh, Norm, how we're doing on time. But this is my last slide. So timeline. Right now, we're currently working on our financial model. Um, we, we are cost estimate. Which, which uh from our engineers is a class, what they call a class four cost estimate. It's plus fifty percent, minus thirty percent. So a very wide range in our cost estimate.
Hold on to your chairs.
But we're, we're in, we're about one point six billion to make this happen. And so as a district, we're working on all of the, the details associated with, with financing this. That, that financial model work will, will continue on for the next couple of years as we, as we, we, you know, continue to evaluate scenarios and. And figure out ways that uh we're going to be able to fund this, fund this project. A lot of the capital uh recovery of this project. With the Highline Canal enclosure will be through water sales. Um, with the water that we generate, um, through the Highline Canal enclosure. We will also receive some, some federal, we also anticipate receiving some federal funding. Um, through Cupka, which is the Central Utah Project Completion Act. Um, there's some, some federal funds available there as well. So the next two years, we anticipate spending doing our environmental impact statement. Um, you all will be invited to participate in, in the public meetings. We'll hold several public meetings through that process, but our hope is that. Uh, January twenty twenty-seven, we'll have a record of decision. Which will give us the authorization to proceed with the, the project. Generating the, the water supply, being able to use it for indoor use and all those, all those components. Okay, we, our district just last, uh. Man, time flies. Was it last week? Was that last week? Yeah, last week, um, awarded a design contract for a water treatment plant. Um, that preliminary design and final design and all the way through construction. It's about a, you know, it's about an eight-year design contract. We, we have a pilot plant. That's being built right now so that we can pilot, test. The water supply coming out of Strawberry Reservoir so that. In the design process, we know all the components and parts and pieces that need to be in place to treat the water. Um, to a high quality and a high standard. Um, our preliminary design will go through about twenty twenty. Uh, seven and then, and then we'll, we'll get started on our final design and hopefully have construction sometime in twenty twenty-eight. For the water treatment plant. Highline Canal enclosure, we, because we don't have to do any piloting, we won't begin our preliminary design until we've reached. Our draft D I S, which is a year from now. And the hope is that we, we have our preliminary design finished. About the same time, we get our, our record of decision on our, on our E I S. And then we begin final design and, and construction again in that twenty twenty-eight timeframe. And all the, all the offsite water facilities that we were talking about down here, um. In, in your neck of the woods and the pipeline that goes to uh Mona and to Goshen. Those designs will, will start sometime middle of twenty twenty-six and, and same thing. Hopefully beginning construction about twenty twenty-eight. With an end goal of trying to, trying to be able to deliver. Uh, water through those facilities by twenty thirty-two. That would, that would be delivery of raw water to Highline Canal and through the U L S pipe. And delivery of, of finished water to anybody that is ready to take finished water out of the treatment plant. So. Those are my slides and I'd be happy to ask, answer any questions that you have. Um, I think the most important thing that we want to portray is, is that. We, we hope this is a very collaborative. Uh, process that we go through. We, we do not want to design and construct this project in a vacuum. End of the day, it's going to be water that will be available for the municipalities here in South Utah Valley. We want it to be something that, that uh benefits you as a community. And, and helps you adjust and adapt to the future needs that you'll have as, as you continue to grow. Yeah, I, like, like the pioneers in the early nineteen hundreds. I hope what we're doing sets us up for the next hundred years. And, and we believe it will. We believe that this is, this is a project that will be needed. And that hopefully a hundred years from now, somebody's standing here and, and uh, you know. Being grateful for the work that we did and, and uh, looking at their next hundred years.
Showing a picture of you in a pipeline rather than in a.
That's right, we'll, we'll get all of us in a, in a pipeline and. And we'll make sure Norm's the guy with the tux on, holding the shovel, you know? In that, in that early picture, so.
Mayor Council, it's alright. We want to turn just a minute over to Bar, our Assistant General Manager, to. I, I, he wants to address uh your question about timing and taxes and money that we've all been paying for the last sixty years.
Could, could I ask one question before we go on? And that goes back to the uh population numbers that you have in your estimates? Are you pretty comfortable with those?
Those are, those are the numbers from the Governor's Office, the planning and budget from twenty seventeen. Um, they have some new numbers, but they haven't been broken out. Mag hasn't broken those out. So there.
Mayor, your question implies you think something different. Which part?
Well, I think you're way off, but.
Way high or way low?
Uh, you, you are way low.
I think we're already at that first estimate.
But, but that's not, that, that's not, that's pretty indicative of, of everything that's gone through the KMC Gardner Institute, everything that's come through. The, the Budget and Management Office. It, it's not unusual for us to find different numbers than what we believe. I, I honestly believe that, that from a professional standpoint. The twenty twenty census was wrong. And because we went through COVID and all the other stuff that we, I, I think that's thrown it off completely. I, I believe that we're. That, that we've already hit or are very close to hitting your twenty thirty estimate, which is nineteen plus thousand people. So, a- a- again. Growth, yes, there's growth and it's all a matter of density. It's all a matter of, of where things end up, right? You're, you're using numbers that are. Estimates at this point in time and, and that's the best you can do, so.
Being a, a quasi-state federal agency. Those are kind of the numbers that get handed to us. They can be justified all the way up to them.
Was just curious, that's all. Just, just so you know, we don't, we, we don't agree with. Even Mag's numbers don't necessarily agree with what we, if we track what we felt was really good before the census. And then added building permits to it, it's not even close.
I don't know if Norm's giving us the bad news or the good news.
Right.
Well, and I, thank you Roger. Um, I don't have a, a tremendous a lot or amount more to say than what Roger has and. Uh, but I, I did want to. Thank you. First of all, we recognize as we're constructing large facilities like our sixty inch pipeline. It's a, it's a big impact to the community. And to your, to the citizens here. We appreciate the patience. Um, we have a good contractor and, and good staff that's working on that, but we've really appreciated working with Norm and John and. And uh, um, all the support that we've had as we've worked on that. Um, where we're going to get to in terms of population, we don't necessarily know. Um, one of the, the roles that we see is having a, a central is this need to look. Kind of big picture and on the fifty, sixty, seventy year, hundred year horizon. Um, which is tricky. Uh, it, it's hard to really know where populations are gonna go, but what we do know. And, and to the point here, we got a neighborhood. That's not showing up on the map in any year. It's gonna be there. We know that if we're not a, a, aggressive and get moving as soon as we can. The costs get even higher and it gets that much harder for us to, to get infrastructure in place. So we're really trying to, to be assertive and, and get, um, what we can, uh, moving forward in the ground. Now, one thing that I, I would note, um, you know, Roger mentioned. Our cost estimates are around one point six billion dollars. That's, those are, those are really, really big numbers. But I, I wanted to mention in terms of Central Utah's policy, as we've constructed water treatment plants, you, you can see here on this, on this figure. Um, we're working through answering the question, how are we gonna pay for this? We, we don't have all of the answers. One point six billion dollars is a lot. But what we do know is when we've constructed water treatment plants, we have historically used tax revenue as a, a major element of that. We've constructed water treatment plants in, in Salt Lake Valley, in Orem, out in, in Duchaine and in Vernal. And all of the constituents, all of the folks within the district boundaries have, have helped support that growth. As we consider the growth that, that Santaquin and, and the, and the municipalities in the south end of the valley are dealing with now. Um, that, there will be a benefit that's received by these communities, just like. Other communities have, have benefited in the past, where some of that tax revenue is gonna help. Help, you know, communities in the south end of the valley support what needs to be done. So, uh, that, ho- hopefully that helps provide a little bit of clarity as to what's coming and, and. Again, we don't know exactly what our financial model is gonna look like, but we knew, know certain pieces of it. And one of those is, is we've constructed water treatment plants. We've typically funded those through tax revenue. And the good folks in the south end of Utah Valley have helped support that in the past in other areas in the district and now. Um, as we move forward, uh, the benefits will, will be coming down here, so.
So when you say tax revenue, what, like, what exactly you mean?
So, so we collect tax revenue from everybody within the district boundaries and, and a portion of that will be used. As it comes to the district, that'll be re, um, it'll be used to help cover the cost of construction of the treatment plant. Property taxes, yeah.
I just didn't know if you were saying additional taxes. Or like what, what specific, I mean, there's a lot of tax revenue options.
Yeah, we, we collect, you know, a portion um from property taxes and, and we'll be using that. Okay, so I, I, I really wanted to just thank you for, um, your patience as we're doing the construction and. As Roger mentioned, these projects don't happen in a vacuum. Uh, the only way it's successful is if we're working with you, working together in partnership to, um, to really. Design and develop and deliver a project that'll work for the communities that we intend to serve, so. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks all of you. Thanks Carolyn. I'm glad you were able to get these guys together. I've got your picture. I saw it, I'd see what you have. Uh, you can, you may wanna hear the next one, but uh, I'm not sure. Uh, I'd like to invite Curtis Roly up. We, he's going to talk about actually. Some of the trails along the pipeline.
Well, I'm just gonna add on to them. I've seen this presentation now probably ten times. But they didn't show the last sixty years behind that twenty twenty-five. They told us it was coming in nineteen sixty and now it's finally coming. So the next hundred years might take sixty years to get all this built. So. Can you show a map of?
I'm, I'm trying to get it there.
I called up Dan, I don't know, last week?
Yeah, week and a half goes.
So these, these guys came and are taking away fifty feet of our orchard. So I thought, well. Sorry, I'm not trying to pick on you. I'm just giving you a bad time, Roger.
Did they just take it? I didn't know that it was given away.
It felt like they took it. How's that? So anyway, I called Dan, I said, you know, there's fifty feet here alongside of our orchard that. Is not gonna be able to be used. They won't let us plant trees back in there. And I just said, Dan, you know. If we're looking at some kind of a trail system. Here's an option or an opportunity. Let's get together and talk. You know, we, we can't put trees there. If the city wants to put a trail in, we could work with something and figure out, how, how we can do it. But uh, there's a few things we have to have in place to make it happen. We, we still have to play farmer. And we can't be stopped by people who are walking up and down the trail telling us we can't do things on our farm. That's one of the biggest concerns we have. What's that? No, no. But we'd like to work with the city to put something in along that. Fence line from that top dot down to the bottom. And now I'm sure there's other people along this pipeline that will probably jump on and. Wanna do something similar because they can't use that fifty feet for anything but to grow weeds now. So that's kind of where we started and have a discussion, so. Is that what we talked about?
That, that's it. You, you talked about needing some kind of a cover over it and a fence, fence bill.
Yeah, we'd like to have.
I think, you know, you need to bring those things up too, so the council can hear.
So along the railroad side, they're putting in a fence. That was in the negotiation. But on the other side, on the orchard side, we'd like to have some kind of a fence that stops people from coming into the orchard encroaching. And would prefer to have some kind of a way to stop the dirt bikes from getting on that trail. It'd be more of a walking trail, not a dirt bike trail. Right now, uh, the guys doing the contract. They're in line right now to put in a pretty nice fence and gate, so no one will be able to go up and down that. So we thought it'd probably be advantageous to talk about it way in advance before they start ordering parts. To finalize that part of the project. If we wanted to do something like this, so.
What, what type of trail is this? Is this just like a dirt trail or? Okay, I, yeah, I'm just thinking like dirt bikes, like some, are we thinking dirt? Is that like?
Gravel. I mean, right now we have people walk that daily. That we would rather have them in, in some other. That we would rather have them in, in some other place. But they walk it, they go in the orchard, their dogs go in the orchard, they poop everywhere. It's all against, you know, we, we're not supposed to have that in our orchard or so.
Do you own that last triangular section right before the last dot or is that Fowers?
So if you look at the top of the screen, that's our, end of our property right there.
Right there, that triangle piece. Okay, that dot.
Can you go up a little bit more? Like, yeah.
Carolyn's is the triangle right there.
It's my brother.
Oh, yeah.
It's not me.
But they can't plant trees there either. So I'm sure we could go talk to them and say, do you wanna add something in there? Fowers can't plant trees either. So you're looking at potentially going from Lark Street all the way down to eight fifty north there by Laura's house.
Well, the one thing too is that road comes to a dead end when they blocked it off when we used to put people around the, the railroad tracks. And it goes straight down that road, then you hit the canal. And eventually with that being made into a, anyway, a trail, that would be a good other way.
So I can tell you that your odds of getting an at-grade crossing for pedestrians through a railroad is going to be very, very difficult.
Zero.
I, I think that's very close, yes.
Yes.
If, if that's what you're talking about, is having a connection here across there, a trail or a road going across there is likely not going to happen in, in my lifetime. In fact, this was one of the ones that the county and the railroad closed some decades ago when they put the other improvements in the other areas where they are, where there are at-grade crossings. I, I, I recognize that. Yeah, I recognize that. Right?
I, I have a question for the conservancy guys while they're here. And that would be if, if we were to work with these guys, it's still your property because now you bought it through the easement or whatever, or owned the property. I, I'm not sure where it is. An easement?
It's an easement.
Okay, so you still own the property.
But we can't do anything with it.
So my question is.
We drive on it.
How much, how much could you actually do to create a trail? What about putting this fence in? How does that, you know, what kind of rules do you have?
We, we have to look at the fence as far as.
I guess so.
So we have to look at the location.
Gotta have access to the pipe.
And then any facilities would have to be licensed because it's, it's federal property. We would have to have a federal license agreement, which is doable. So a trail would be something that could be licensable.
What kind of cost is that? Or we have to go through a NEPA and get the Forest Service involved and they have to send their trails?
They do, they, they would have to do NEPA, but it would be a categorical exclusion. So it would be something that would be, be done administratively to look at that NEPA.
So most likely.
The license wouldn't cost anything. It would just be a, an agreement that dictated the terms of operation maintenance. So with the trail, there would be some obligation to maintain the easement. If we had to go in and, and maintain the pipe, it would be responsibility of the owner of the trail to, to fix the trail if we had to do some maintenance, things like that.
Well, where, where this trail's gonna end up is more right underneath the poop trap, the poop pipe.
Underneath?
Yeah, the trail will be on top of the poop pipe.
Oh. Hey, for the council and mayor that don't, the council that doesn't know.
Turd mill pipe.
We, we have two sewer pipes that run through this same corridor.
Right where the.
Our po, our pipes are closer to the railroad tracks than the CUP pipe that's going in right now. And so we, we do own an easement there, but that easement is not currently allowed to use for any public access. My, my recollection is it's very limited. That, that's probably something we would have to open up and revisit if that's somewhere we go with that. But, but we do, so you have railroad tracks and the fence at the railroad tracks. Then you have our city easement that has pipes in it, two pipes, one gravity, one pressure. And then some distance away from that is the CUP pipeline. So the fifty feet, I believe that you're talking about is the whole of, from the railroad fence to include the outside of both easements.
Correct.
Yeah, so, so I, I, I just can tell you that, that we do have an easement there for, for sewer pipes. And, you know, that could be something that we could look into, but it doesn't, it doesn't include their easement. Their easement is completely separate from ours.
How wide is that?
What's that?
How wide is that easement?
So fifty feet total. I wanna say ours is twenty. I think, I think you guys' is probably thirty or forty, something like that. But I, I wanna say ours is fifteen or twenty from the railroad fence, if I remember correctly. You can, but, but that seems to be.
I don't have the numbers. I just know we have fifty feet of dead space now.
Yeah.
So what, are you thinking trail width, the whole fifty or?
No, no, no.
Six foot trail?
Five or six foot trail.
And, and then a fence right on the other side of it to control the traffic?
Yeah.
How do you stop people from going down it when you're spraying? Cause that's gonna be the biggest.
That's my biggest concern. If we, if there's a sign system, if there's something, you know, you could put at the top of the trail, the day we're spraying, we can throw a sign down and says, you know what? This trail is closed because of farming activity. Or you lift the sign up and say it's open now. I don't, I don't know.
You've already got people walking on it when you're spraying it.
I know. We soak them and they don't care. Yeah.
I think another good point that Norm brought up.
They won't have any bugs.
Trail connectivity is always something that's, that's appealing and stuff. But the entire stretch of this is actually not in Santaquin City, uh, city limits. And so there probably need to be coordination with the county to, to control anything, aspect of the trail or, or improvements to the trail or that sort of a thing. So I think this is, this is something the council could obviously consider and support for trail connectivity and, and that. But probably there, there needs to be involvement with the county on this since it's not in, in our jurisdiction.
There may be some CDBG money that we maybe could pick up for trails on this as well. We haven't considered.
We haven't, yeah. I mean, this is all fresh and new, so I don't know.
Where, where does this connect?
To make sure that I understand, what you're really proposing is not a trail across CUP pipeline, although it would have to cross in two locations, one at each terminus, right? But, but what you're really talking about is a trail on top of our sewer lines closer to the railroad, hugging the railroad tracks. That's really what I'm hearing.
Yeah. And we've only had one break since you guys put them in.
Yeah.
Did you fix it?
No, I wasn't getting that.
Trench. I think he meant to say trench.
Claude just came out. I saw him.
It was coming. It was there.
It was everywhere, but I didn't do it.
Bruce?
It's, it's all right. We, we're gonna spend the same amount of money on improvements. I think what I hear you saying is can we spend the same amount of money, maybe rearrange some of the improvements? If it'd be all right, maybe we give the staff, talk with the landowner, talk with our, our staff as well, talk to environmental people, do a little research for you and, and maybe report back to Norm or report back to you guys and, and talk about what's really available for options and what kind of makes sense and what doesn't for that.
I, I would like some other input. If there's extra ways that we could fund it or help pay for this, that would be really cool.
If moving a fence one way or the other helps to, to further this effort, that's, that's a good approach.
I think this is an additional fence if, because you gotta put the fence at the right-of-way line with the railroad, but this would be in a different.
Yeah, there's already a fence.
In, in a form, there is a fence there.
We have a really good.
It's a hundred-year-old barbed wire fence that Rowley's don't take care of.
No, the fence that we have right now is.
Is it, is it a good fence?
It's a good fence. The city put it in.
If there's, if there's an option, then that's something that we can certainly look at.
If we can rearrange things and end up all in a better place, we're willing to talk and make it happen.
We'd love to let you pay for it. Well, you know what? I, I think it's a really good thing. I, I love working with farms to be able to come up with something like this. I mean, they don't always come about just for no reason. And this brings in another half, three quarters of a mile. I don't, I'm not sure how much of trail that, it's already being used.
Maybe the county would be interested in just.
Yeah, again, we're, we're happy to have a conversation. This is great. This is.
Yeah.
Jason, how does this tie into our existing?
We're, we're gonna talk about other things on our budget too, as we go about this week. I'm not sure we have many answers right now. I think it's a wonderful proposal.
It was just an idea. Now, I got some other things. Can we talk?
Yeah, but they get uglies. No, go ahead.
So we need some help. You saw this last year, all the semis dumping in the dump. And I'm sure none of you drove down there and followed them to see what kind of dust storm they brought up every time they drove into the dump. So the guys doing water would drive down there, drive in the gate, turn around and go right back out. They never went all the way to the end of where they were dumping their, all their trash. We put over a hundred thousand dollars extra in our orchard right there next to the dump this last year, just in Mitaside. We gotta have some help with this construction company taking care of their dust. So I'm not sure who we talked to, but that's number one. We gotta have help this year because we're not done with this main street project. But we, we can't have another year like last year because somebody doesn't wanna water the, all the way to the end of the dump and on a regular basis. So.
Don't leave yet.
Does problem from Vancon, Artcon?
No, they, they kept things so muddy that it was.
That was another different problem.
They did great. All I had to do was call Chad and everything was taken care of.
He's, he's a resident out there, isn't he?
His, his dad is. So.
Well, what can we do? John, Norm?
Sorry. Yep.
I knew there was some issues with us when I come up. And every time we receive phone call from you, we, we get on Landmark, get down there and get a water truck, get that help.
They always, they would come down to the gate and turn around and let, they wouldn't always. Here's a suggestion. Cut a new entrance into the dump. Down by the road that goes up to my parents' old house. So all they have to do is drive in right there and drive out. Instead of having to drive six hundred feet into the dirt, all they do is go in and out right there on the end of the dump.
Isn't, isn't there an old gate right there by that road anyway?
It's far, it's under the dump.
It's farther down my blue plane.
Close to the gas place.
Yeah.
Well, I think we can help get this resolved. It shouldn't be a problem.
And if you want me to bring some pictures, we got lots of pretty pictures of dust. If you need some pictures to see what it looked like.
You don't have any pictures of dust?
No, I can show you. Uh, last thing, and, and I don't know where to start. You guys can point me in the right direction. We have, if you go to the other side of town, over by my brother's house, Chad's house, right there where it says Hidden Orchards.
I'm with you.
So we wanna thank you. We were able to put in a, a wedding venue there and it's been great for us. It, it's been fun to have people in the orchard. This is something my dad would probably, he's turned over in his grave many times. We opened up the orchard and we're letting people in and, like I said, that was something my dad would never do.
Isn't that what you're trying to prevent on the other end of town?
What's that?
The fence that we're talking about, that's what you're trying to prevent on the other side of town. So, yeah, it's.
We're gonna put in our own fence to keep people from walking through that one. We, we, we've been around and we've looked at a lot of different agritourism things. And one idea that we'd like to talk about with the city is putting in some kind of a, like a yurt or something in the orchard. Bring people to the orchard and give them a, an agritourism opportunity to be in the, in the orchard. I don't know if it's something we can do. We'd like to figure out zonings. We'd like to talk and have this conversation if it's something we can do in the, in, in that orchard. And we're, we're trying to build this up to be more than just a wedding venue. This will be more of an agritourism area for us. And where it's already zoned into the city and everything, we wanna make sure we're doing everything right and be here walking through the process with you. We have lots of friends who go just put things in and ask for permission later. We, we've decided we wanted to do it right from the beginning and get the, get it set up right. So I don't know how we start this process, but we wanna do it working the right way with everybody.
I think that's a great idea.
I, I think you could probably start me with our development guys.
Yeah, this, this is something that, an idea they brought a year, year and a half ago or so when they started doing some of these things. There, it would have to be some sort of a zoning amendment. Uh, that property all, if I remember right, is all zoned R-ten. It's a residential zone anyways. But there could be something that we put in that zone that is, is a special exception for agriculture. Uh, it's been a few years now. This is kind of a topic I've, I've brought up a, a few times of, of, you know, agriculture is such a big a part of Santaquin and people wanna preserve it. But if we really wanna preserve it, then, then there, there can be things that can be done to, to help, you know, the farmers.
And, and we have done. We, we, we've changed code at Jason's direction over the years.
But it's Ag R-ten, isn't it?
No, it's not. There's no Ag R-ten.
If it's an agricultural use, if there's things that we can do.
Still green belt, right?
Yes.
It's still, but what I'm, what I'm getting at is if there's things that we can do to support the, the financial feasibility of a farm in a growing area, then, then that's gonna ultimately help preserve the agriculture that a lot of people say is important and, and why they move here. But otherwise, you know, it's gonna become so expensive that, you know, the option might be to sell it off to a developer and develop it into homes. So I think there's certainly a balance here where, where there might be something even in our residential zones for even people with smaller farms, that there can be some level of support, even, even some sort of commercial activity in a residential neighborhood for agricultural type businesses. So.
Why don't, why don't you and, and Ryan get together and then meet with, with Curtis and maybe some of the other brothers if they're gonna.
Well, it's my nephews. I, they're the ones doing this.
Well, like I say, I, this is something I kinda worked on probably been three, four years ago. And I just would have to bring it up again and I've already had some, some things, some ideas on paper. And if it's something that you like, we can, we can kind of bring that back to the service and, and reevaluate it.
It, it likely would require a zone change or a code change just because.
We can make those kind of things and if it helps, great.
R-ten is, is different. The, the, the ag use that they have there is, is likely a legal law conforming because it's been there probably before, since before it was zoned. And so any changes to that, that's what's gonna kick in, any, any required changes in code and that kind of thing. And, and again, to Jason's credit, we did this a couple of years ago to allow these types of things, sales of, of agricultural, very, very little. But at the same time, it is something that we, we're happy to look at and, and at Mayor's direction, we're, we're happy to bring it back to the council. We would just need to coordinate with you and get your ideas on what your plan is and, and talk through it and figure out what can or can't be done.
So we need to work with, start here with Jason.
Jay, Ryan Harris is our senior planner. Between him and Jason, they'll be, they'll be the ones to talk to and start off with.
All right. Thank you.
So Ryan's just been back with us the last seven, eight months. And so I think we can get a good handle on this if, if they need help. Jason, if you just kind of ramrod it with it, I, I think that'd be the best way.
And Mayor, I, I really think, like I say, I can, I can go back into some of the work that I did previously on this. It's really kind of a high-level philosophical discussion of what you wanna do. This might be a, a, a good future work session type of a discussion, but I can, I can bring back some of the ideas that, that I had and, and the reasons for, for that and, and we can go from there.
Why don't, why don't we get your nephews? I don't know who's.
It's Dustin. He's the one spearheading.
Isn't he up north?
He is a Spanish, but he works here all the time, every day.
So if Dustin was a part of it.
Yeah.
Maybe Doug.
Dustin Derrick could be here.
But if, if they would work with you and give input too, what, what they envision, that may help this move along. Just send them in.
Yep. All right. Well, thank you. Like I said, this whole trail idea, it was just thrown last week. We were kind of looking at it going, what are we gonna do with fifty feet? We're just gonna have a weed patch.
Can I, can I ask a question, Mayor, before we end this discussion? I, I was, I, I, I think I didn't get across, Jason, is this, is that trail? Does that connect to anything? What, like what trails does it connect to already? Is it part of our master plan? Or does it connect to one of our master plan trails?
Yeah, in terms of that alignment, I don't know. Off the top of my head, I, I'd need to look a little bit closer. Uh, I think in our trail master plan, it's gonna generally try and connect points A to B. Uh, I think this one makes sense. Uh, trails along canals, railroads, things like that, particularly where there's easements. Yeah, it, it helps, helps, it makes sense. And it's, in, in my opinion, and I could go down a rabbit hole here, but in my opinion, it's a true trail because, you know, a trail along a road is a glorified sidewalk. So this, this I think is something that is appealing and, and certainly something that Quinn look at. And if it's not in our master plan, it's certainly something that we could reevaluate or, or amend our master plan to include and, and make sure that it's connecting to where it needs to connect.
I like the idea.
I like the idea.
Now it goes uh into some residential area, but it's along road to road.
Cause I like the idea, I just, it's just, if you put a trail and then you're maintaining it, now it's like, well, now we have to finish that trail. So it's not just the the cost of that trail, but it's also now we need to reprioritize other trails, systems that maybe might have been a higher priority to make sure that that trail isn't just like a half-mile dirt trail, I mean, it's great, but I I it's just, I just wanna make sure that it's like relevant and prioritized within the broader context of our trails.
If it doesn't fit, that's, you're not hurting my feelings.
No, no, no. I was just curious about that, I like the idea.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, appreciate you.
Have a good evening.
You too.
We're just getting started.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're welcome to stay.
We got a break coming up, so we're good.
I'm gonna go to a basketball game.
There you go, that sounds like a bet, can I go? No, I'm just kidding.
Norm, uh, uh, business?
Yeah, so Mayor and Council will just move to the, to the regular meeting packet. Um coming up will be obviously work session and regular minutes, expenditures, resolution for surplus property. Believe this is a a plotter that we're surplusing, we just bought a new one, the one that we're surplusing is probably ten-plus years old and I'm not sure that they even service it anymore, Chamber of Commerce, if they are here, we'll, we'll do that, we'll talk about business licensing and and building permits. And then moving forward, um there is a, there is a possible action, discussion of possible action on a, an annexation petition, I would point out that this is nothing more than accepting the petition, we've talked about this before and we have accepted, I think, under this council, at least one other petition where we've just accepted the petition, there is no approval. There is no anything other than just saying, yes, we are willing to consider your application. Happy to answer any questions that you have on that, uh item number seven, discussion of possible action for award of architectural design contract with WPA Architects. Little history on this one, we talked about and have some money set aside to do a wreck building over behind the existing wreck building. And the building for the cemetery, the the storage lot that we have north of the cemetery. Uh as we went through this, we we found that that building code and city code is not as simple as just putting up a a pole building, even though that's what we would like to do and what we're planning to do. We have to go through the architectural and engineering process to be able to do that. Um WPA is a, is a fantastic architect, they they, we did a, we did an RFP and then we received ten or eleven uh uh proposals and WPA's came out on top, I would in- indicate that this is a qualifications-based RFP or or proposal, which means that with professional services, we do not have to take the lowest bid, we we take the most qualified person, for most qualified firm. I I would also point out that WPA did the architecture on the existing recreation building and this building that we're in. And our Public Works Building, if I remember correctly, so then plenty of history in Santaquin, they do a fantastic job. Happy to answer any questions that you have about that.
Yeah, Norm, can you remind me of the source of the money, is it from uh, from a grant or from our general fund?
This, this would actually be, both of these designs would be from park impact fees. There, those, both of those projects, both of those building projects are included in our parks uh Recreation Trails and Open Space Master Plan, IFFP and IFA.
So is this beyond what was originally budgeted?
We did not anticipate this cost, it can work within the budget that we currently have, and then we may need to adjust budget again as we go forward with with getting the design and then ordering buildings and that kinda thing, we we did not anticipate this cost originally, again, because it was it was kinda pared down and anticipating we were just gonna go put up a pole building, which you can't do. You you can, if you're on a farm in the county and they don't require a building permit, but here, we have some, some steps that we need to to jump through. Resolution, uh any other questions on that one, thank you for that, Art and Brian. Resolution oh two oh five is updating employee handbook for uh pertaining specifically to overtime for fire department employees, this just basically gets us in line with being able to work a certain amount of overtime without overtime costs. Um as you may recall, our our full-time um staffing of the of the fire department EMS with three people during the eve, the nighttime and five people during the day is in full swing and and this helps us to be able to manage, again, budgets and expectations of overtime or not overtime according to this, to this uh 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 policy. If you have any questions, I'm gonna give those to Jason, cause he worked through the the process there with our, our legal counsel and with Ryan. You got off easy.
Wait, I have, I I, here, I do have a question, so uh why didn't we need it before, just because of our additional staffing is what what triggered that, we're, we're, is it there already overtime?
My understanding is it's not necessarily in need per se, this is just as the, as the department's maturing. Ryan's identifying things that that other departments do that kind of help regulate hours, and so this is basically increasing the amount of hours you need before you can start accumulating overtime and and it's something that I think is is pretty standard in a lot of fire departments, so it's not necessarily a need, this is really just something that Ryan's trying to put in place to 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 help his department as it matures and and as he's continuing to manage employees' hours.
And as we've gone to full-time coverage.
Yeah, all right.
Uh any other questions on that? Ordinance oh two oh one, twenty twenty-five is water dedication policy at the Mayor's direction. We have looked at water policy and our our water dedication policy and have uh his direction brought this before you to consider that right now we allow in areas that have not been historically irrigated, we allow a hundred percent money in lieu of water right dedication. This would change that to only being a maximum of fifty percent, and then the other fifty percent would need to be actually wet water dedication a- as we accept it. That helps us to round out our water um dedication policy and acceptance policy, so that as we move forward we can still have the water resources that we need to be able to continue to grow as we grow. Happy to answer any questions that anybody has on that, John gets all the hard questions, I get all the easy ones.
Let's try to end by six fifty if we can.
Okay, Jason, you've got the next two ordinances.
I guess really, do you have any questions on either one of these? The setback tables is really kind of reformatting a lot of our setback requirements in into more clearly understood tables, there's a couple minor uh substantive changes, really, it's it's trying to address some discrepancies between our landscaping setback ordinance and our, our uh, our individual zones, so uh yeah, unless you have any questions, I know it's a big ordinance and it feels like there's a whole bunch to it. And then the general plan amendment, so uh Ryan, I know Jeff sat in the planning commission meeting and and knows that, there's basically a lot of options that we've put down on the table, and and really, a lot of those options are something that for consideration even in future years. We wanna keep those good ideas there so that if we need to tap into those ideas, we can. Uh but essentially, I, the planning commission's recommendation was that uh there's an option, or there's a strategy one that's got four different options. Uh the recommendation from Planning Commission, and I think is in line with with, I know, conversations I've had with individual council members, and that is that uh you wanna go with the R fifteen zone as being the next zone that allows for detached accessory dwelling units. There's a few more options that's that 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 fit in that same strategy that if, if you wanna look at, you can. But then aside from that, their recommendation for the the strategies two through five are pretty similar to what we've done in past years, and then there's, there's some additional strategies that are, are some creative ideas that we have, that like I say don't have to be used, but we wanna keep those ideas in our back pocket for future years, so I can go into any more detail there if you'd like me to.
Okay, last thing on the agenda is the uh resolution for Enbridge Energy, who is, used to be Dominion, who used to be Questar, this is for natural gas service interior to the subdivision in the Santaquin Peak subdivision, with the, there's already a gas line that runs north and south along the the west side of Summit Ridge Parkway. This is just tying everything in and getting that done and getting it so that all of our seventeen lots out there will have gas service to them. This has been budgeted and planned, it's just we, we finally have gotten a contract from Enbridge to get this done and get it installed.
And and the main, the money's been planned for.
Does that, is that money coming out of CDRA?
It is, yep, all of this stuff that we're doing in the CDRA i- is is self-funded, as we've talked about, yes, sir. And and again, this has been budgeted and planned for, it's just time to implement it, we have the contract now. That's all I have, Mayor, unless you have, anybody has any questions or concerns?
Um just one last note, we will have a closed session tonight, so. Anything else, then I'd ask for motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Seconded.
Seconded, Brian?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.